Commissioner Clark. I'm gonna start over. Commissioner's meeting Wednesday, August seventh, Commissioner Wasn't and Commissioner Clark present with Commissioner England do momentarily. And for up is public comment, as we always often, we have nobody lying. And we do have something in the room that already asked, she's here to learn and listen. Appreciate that, thank you. Up next is elected officials, I know Deb will be joining us in a bit. But I would like to start with Cheryl, do you have anything?
Um, nothing that isn't necessarily on the um.
Yeah. Um, and then I'm gonna move on to Chief. Chief, do you have anything today for us, sir?
Uh, nothing major, just um, we're continuing to plug along, we're helping out Winchester. With their EMS coverage. About a total of eight full days where we've sent a full ambulance crew down and about another six or so. Where it's just been one of our providers coming in and helping on their ambulance.
Can you repeat that, Chief?
Yep.
Jack would like to hear it again.
So i- it's been about eight, eight fold crews of twelve hours from zero six hundred to eighteen hundred. Uh, throughout the month of July that we sent a full ambulance crew down, then about another half dozen. Uh, days where we've sent one provider down to work with one of theirs. It's been going very well. The relationships are being built extremely well with our providers and theirs. And. We're continuing to help them out as needed.
Now, is this due to vacation or is it due to staffing and all there was all the above?
This is due to their staffing mostly.
So this could be an ongoing issue for us to be helped support Winchester, am I wrong in thinking that?
You're not wrong, Chris. Um, we're working to set up another meeting with Chief Kellum. To see how it's been going from their point of view and what's gonna be needed in the future.
So, I mean, but this is actually potentially a good transition because ultimately if they subscribe. Uh, and they gradually ramp up. Then they've got their own smoothies. But yeah, think about that. What sorts of proof do they have normally?
Equals two, one ambulance equals two individuals, right?
Correct.
So um, so my other question would be, are we, so if we look at the quarter. Um, if we're over there, is there a off, is there a chance that we may be running into the over twenty percent haul ratio?
There is, and we've started looking at those numbers, both with data from four one five. And our own internal data to see where that's gonna land. Because that is.
No, go ahead, finish that.
That is a concern that we may end up running over that twenty percent that was originally agreed upon. On covering their calls, we did have a Saturday. Two weeks ago where out of eleven calls in Winchester, we covered nine of them. And uh, Northfield covered the other two.
So.
Have coverage at all.
Okay, okay. So um. So I think in your conversations with the chief, he has to be reminded of the twenty percent rule.
Yes.
So that it's not a shock to them when they see that we're gonna be billing for a certain percentage above twenty percent. And um, for the, for the calls that are above that, if it's twenty-five percent, then they'll be charged a five percent.
Yeah, well, yeah, because right now, the, the only agreement though is the reimbursement and hourly rate of pay. And plus benefits and um, that information I'm assuming is being passed along to Linda?
Yes. I'm gonna have those numbers.
I, I don't know that yet, certainly we need to have the conversations because right now, the only agreement that's on the table is that we're reimbursing.
Yeah.
An hourly rate of pay plus that.
If that for.
Still the coverage.
Two, two people.
Um, well, it all depends on how many people. How many, um, it's for how many people that we actually have to send there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Reimbursement for calls. That's if it's our ambulance and so Chief, did you say our ambulance has been going there or we've been on their ambulance?
Both.
Well, yeah, so when we're on their ambulance.
Yeah, we've sent our ambulance, so we would be transporting. Uh, I believe we've eight days out of July. Um, and then we've been sending a single provider down to run on their ambulance. That on those days would be reimburse the hourly wage of the agreed upon um.
I know, yeah.
Sixteen seventeen an hour.
See if that's all.
Because it's all they have in the budget, because that's what they pay their.
Yeah, so it's their price plus.
Yeah, so that's why.
That's why we have to, that's why he has to start talking to the chief. But you, you're a hundred percent right about the transitional, this may be leading to something.
But I, I just, and I. We just need to settle in our realistic hourly rate that actually does. In this setting, the same as we're obligated to do for the sheriff's stuff, that it's all an all-in thing that. That really guarantees we cover our expenses because of why I said.
Yeah, this original arrangement obviously was on an emergency basis and um. I.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, there ideally is the reimbursement for the calls, but anytime it's not our ambulance, we're not getting reimbursed, so. That's why it's only, it's been about a month, month and a half.
Yeah.
Cause it was up, so this is where now it's time that we really have to revisit if this is gonna be a long-term relationship.
Yeah.
That the, the reimbursement structure, which is interesting because they're, they're still limited to their budget, so I don't know.
Well, you know, I know they're limited to their budget, but they've got multi-minute. You know, living through your towns, run over your all the vendors like we do. Man, I appreciate it, I'm not, but, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I know that.
Somewhere else. Where it shifts into doesn't deserve it either. They, they, nobody else deserves those subsidies. But, you know, that's, that's part of the growth.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Chief, anything else? Chief, did you hear it?
I didn't hear that last part, Chris.
Staffing on our end is good?
Staffing is very good. Um, we did let a probationary employee go. Last week, um, but that was expected. Um, and our staffing is still solid, we had another employee returned today from uh, a non. Cheshire County work-related injury, uh, so he's.
Is he able to do full service?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, we're covering more and more uh, to what Jack was saying earlier. Um, just because other towns haven't reached out yet for coverage doesn't mean that. They won't, um, we are aware that Winchester, like I was saying with their staffing. Uh, doesn't really have much coverage, especially on weekends. So. That's a concern for us moving forward and I believe that we will end up into that twenty percent for the quarter.
Is Jeffrey Ridge still struggling?
Is who?
Is Jeffrey Ridge still struggling with staffing?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, good. Because Fitzwilliam was.
It's Fitzwilliam and Troy that are, are struggling as well.
Okay.
Currently, um, but they haven't reached out for any. Actual agreement like Winchester did.
Okay, I haven't noticed any uh, delays or lags of Jeffrey Holmes.
Okay, I just know a month or so ago, Chief said that Fitzwilliam was taking on some of the calls, which meant. We were then coming into Fitzwilliam Troy more. Is that, is that, that's like you said a few months ago?
Correct, and it seems that uh, Jeffrey Ridge has kind of um. Evened out their staffing, uh, we haven't been hearing Fitzwilliam go in there as much as when I first made that statement.
And sometimes.
Um, apparently Jeffrey Ridge had a significant uh, pay raise. Recently.
Good, good, because you know what? Every other company that's doing that, that only makes us all stronger, so we have to continue to do what we can to support everybody, so. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ken, do you have anything for us today?
I do, um, I need to um, request a non-FMLA leave of absence for a DOC employee. She does not yet qualify for FMLA, um, but needs to be out for a period of time to be determined. Um, this started Monday of this week, um, she does have some earned time that she can use. Um, and I do believe that um, we will be receiving short-term disability paperwork as well, but. Um, I'm just looking for approval for this leave of absence.
Is it, is it for a medical reason or?
Um, yes.
We don't need details.
It's, yes, medical.
No, I assume. Is there any discussions or questions being done on Commissioner Wasn't? Commissioner England.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, next would be Catherine and um, I want to just lead off that due to, due to multiple vacations. Um, we, Catherine has some add-ons to the list of ProShare funding. Uh, two of which are, are small and one due to the, I believe the earthquake is a little bit more. Could be a little bit more expensive if by mistake it's covered. So I'm gonna let uh, Catherine discuss these, these items and then. Look for a motion to um, add these into the ProShare and if you want. Cheryl can give you the, the overall amount after these, these monies are added in.
Yeah, I have it prepared except for she's giving me different numbers that I've been editing, so, but I can still.
Yeah.
Verbal, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Catherine, all yours.
All right, so I'll start with the um, most costly of the challenges we're facing is uh, our passenger elevator has been down. Completely since uh, July. Prior to that, let me just go back and say that um, on April fifth, there was a four point eight. Level earthquake that was centered in New Jersey. And I actually happened to be up on fourth floor doing an audit and I can tell you. That building was shaking significantly, so Maplewood was really shaking back and forth, I could hear a lot of things overhead moving. And I do know that one of our dietary aides got off the elevator. At that point in time and she was freaking out because the elevator was moving so much as the building was and it was very scary for her. Approximately four weeks later, we made an initial call into Stanley because we were experiencing some knocking and oscillating. Between that third and fourth floor of this passenger elevator. Back and forth, they had done a lot of work, all the way up to um, pulling the whole piston jack out. They noticed, they found that the rollers had heavy wear on them, one of them was completely broken. So they repaired all that, replaced all that and the, the whole um. The elevator had been down now for several weeks at this point, they got everything back up and running on the nineteenth of June, but there was still. A knock between third and fourth floor, you could feel it, the car was moving. And uh, one of the things they said was this is the best that they can do with what they've got. And they posited did the earthquake, because at the time there was also other earthquakes um, in located in the Chesterfield area. So they were positing if the earthquake had made any impact. Long story short, three weeks later, on the third of July, we pulled the elevator out of service, it was again knocking very badly. So we have since put in a. Um, an insurance claim into Primax to get them involved and Stanley has been. On-site all week this week and what they have determined it is literally a catastrophic failure because the, the um. Jack assembly, the shaft has actually shifted by a half inch, so while the top is plum and the bottom is plum. Something partway down the shaft has made it to move a half inch out, which is why it keeps breaking the rollers. And why it's um, it's jamming up the piston, it's, there's actual scrapes on the piston. So at this point in time, we need to be prepared to be able to get that elevator back up in service for a worst-case scenario. Of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to completely redo the whole jack assembly. If the PVC pipe doesn't need to be replaced, that would be ten thousand dollar savings, but there's a bow. In the shaft and the piston has been severely damaged. So I am, sorry? I'm just suggesting that we put in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from ProShare. So that we can correct this elevator while we work through with Primax to determine if anything is covered. While we work through with Stanley to determine if the PVC can be spared, uh, but that's, that's where we're at for the elevator.
And as we wait for Primax, so have, have we uh, well, I guess this is what Primax would do. Primax would, would engage their own independent engineer to determine whether this was uh, this way on installation. And you'd want some sort of metal, metallurgical analysis or determination of the rollers to. Whether that much wear could be experienced since the earthquake or it was from original installation, right? Because it's a pretty robust system, the rollers should last for years.
I've seen the rollers, one of them is completely cracked and uh, broken through, the second one is cracked and partly broken through. The third one didn't have too much damage on it, but each time that we had service, the elevator person was rotating. Those around.
And, and how long had they been rotating them around?
Since May.
Since the earthquake?
Since the earthquake. We had no problem prior to the earthquake.
Everything started in May, which was a month after the earthquake. Of course, there were the Chesterfield earthquakes, but um. I'm not aware that they impacted the nursing home in the same way, I, I just physically know. The whole building was shaking side to side on April fifth. So that to me was um, that had the hugest impact on the nursing home. But in any case, yes, we've involved Primax, uh, they, we let them know that Stanley's been here all week. They were planning to come out and send their adjuster, I haven't seen the adjuster, but they've known that they're there, they're still here today. Um, they brought the spider in so that they could uh, lower down and determine that it's not plum anymore in the middle, as I mentioned. And they're bringing in a camera today to go down and actually video it. So uh, you know, it's up to Primax, we've told them, we've led them, and now we need to wait and hear what Primax has to say.
Well, I mean, regardless, it's easy to be. More structural damage to the building. To just. Not that we're aware.
What I, what I've suggested as far as funding is that we utilize. ProShare funds to transfer into Maplewood Capital Reserve. But then in turn, we also do an appropriation that transfers money out of capital reserve. That way, in the event Primax covers it, then this will just build towards the Maplewood Capital Reserve, because at the moment um. At the moment, the, the balance is quite high, but with all the commitments. Um, if, if everything gets paid, uh, paid to the extent that we budgeted for, we're gonna be down to about a hundred and twenty-four thousand. In nursing home reserves, so this will add a hundred and thirty in the event. Primax won't cover it and if Primax. Oh, I'm sorry, if they will, right, if Primax won't cover it, then you'll have the appropriation to.
Yeah, because it has, it has the monies for the upgrades and assisted living. Yeah, some other monies that, that work that needs to be done in, in the nursing home or in these sites, that's why it's higher than that. But if you take all those out, that's what it comes down to.
Isn't there, is there more than one new elevator?
We have three total.
Oh, but, but one of. How, how many were new, new with the addition, how many were rebuilt?
Two were rebuilt.
And this is one of the rebuilds, right?
This is one of the rebuilds.
Yeah, this is the passenger rebuild.
So structured, that had been there for a long time.
Yeah, but they went down, they completely rebuilt the shaft, yeah.
Yeah.
So how much does this need to allocate for a share?
After we, because there's a couple other items that Catherine's gonna mention, but after this um, will be at one million eight thirty-eight. Or twenty-six, that would be um, set aside for future. Budget reductions and taxes to be raised. We were at two million, I can now.
I'm telling you, if she has two more items that she needs to talk about. Go ahead, Catherine.
Um, the next item is our fluidotherapy machine in our occupational therapy department, it's over twenty years old. And we've been repairing it, repairing it and it's really on its last legs, I don't foresee that we can make it last. Until the next budget cycle for a twenty twenty-five capital budget request. And it is honestly used every day multiple times on multiple residents. So to replace it, I've actually got um, a really good bid, normally it's a ten thousand dollar a unit. But if we could replace it in August, I've got a company talk down to seven thousand three hundred.
What machine is it again, Catherine?
Fluidotherapy.
Can you quickly describe what that is and does? I'm, I'm just curious.
Certainly, so inside a box is filled with corn husks. And there's sleeves that the patient puts their hands through, on the top, there's sleeves that the therapist puts their hand through. And while they're in that warm um, air, the therapist can stretch out the fingers, because as you know. Residents in nursing homes are prone to hand contractures, so this is a, a huge element that we use to prevent hand contractures.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And we, we, we don't have money in the equipment line.
Well, um, a, a, there is a small amount in the nursing home, this next item that she's gonna mention, I'm gonna actually suggest that. We do purchase it out of the equipment repurchase, but there is a two thousand dollar budget for equipment purchase for Maplewood. That as of um, like, as of June, I'll have to see what it is as of now, um, still has twelve hundred and sixty-six. However, I was gonna go look at the background of the initial request, I know there was a specific reason, but I'm, I feel like probably. It's more, you know, kind of a general budget line item, but I do wanna just, I did wanna see. What's that?
Maintenance equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause originally what she's gonna present was a, a higher dollar amount, but. You, but the seventy-three hundred would not accommodate the budget line item, it would go over budget. Would her overall budget cover it? Absolutely, so I. I mean, on some level, she could go ahead and just get it in the nursing home budget in general. In other areas and probably even in the Department of Facilities would cover.
Well, I might, you know, I just, some sensitivity to where. To not neglect that approach of stuff. We know could be absorbed into the budget. Um, banana sort of delay. The purchase of the piece of equipment that we use, you know what I mean? Just to get. Get some sense from the delegation, whether they are. Spend seven thousand of ProShare, replace this, the equipment that we use all the time, we could just replace.
Right, within budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but, so. I think the ProShare. Is better off for larger things since.
Yeah.
We really.
Well, in, in the hundred and thirty may not be used, if Primax finds that. There was some reason that they need to come, then pay it, then they'll, they'll pay it, maybe a portion of it. If you pay all of it, they may pay nothing. In that waiting period and until then, we have to be, we have to have to fix.
No, I agree. So obviously our minimum exposure would be a thousand.
Right.
That's what I'm hoping.
Um, so are you waiting to buy this hand repeat device?
I'm sorry, you cut out?
Are you waiting to purchase this hand? Repeat device? Based on this conversation?
We don't have any money appropriated for it, my concern is if we try to wait till the twenty twenty-five budget. We'll, we'll not be able to continue limping it along, so that's why I wanted to bring your attention for ProShare.
And the delegation meeting is uh.
We start with on Monday, we uh, and with the executive committee at ten o'clock on. And with the executive committee, then, but on Monday at seven o'clock, full delegation.
Actually, I, I, we're talking about the hand thing and the hand thing is actually an occupational therapy, not facilities. It's the next couple items we're gonna be talking about, but facilities, there is actually not even an equipment. Purchase line application period for T. So.
Well, I mean, I would, we'll go ahead and replace these of the quick period and, and, and if we. Decide to fund it out of ProShare, define enough out of the budget, well, that line and this will, will also regenerate, but I don't.
Okay, well, it'll be on the list, we'll keep it on the list.
I guess I don't see any reason to delay the order, let's put it that way. Because at that point, if we wait for the delegation being that, ProShare's about, about three weeks.
Mm-hmm. Right, yeah. So you're hearing that, Catherine, correct?
I am, it, it sounds like you're instructing that we go ahead and order it and figure out the budget line later.
Correct, yeah.
Will do, thank you.
You're welcome, all right, keep going.
Okay, so the next two items are for the facilities department, um, one of the things we're, we're challenged with is trying to fill. Two open spots and with fall coming up, we've got a concern, but we've got a suggestion to make our. Staff time more effective and efficient, one is to buy a commercial leaf blower. Um, I just got the numbers in this morning, it looks like it's only six hundred and fifty dollars, so we probably don't need to ask ProShare. We could probably pull that out of. The operating budget, um, yeah.
Yeah.
But then the, the number we got on a bagger to add to the zero turn is much more than we anticipated. That number came out at fifty-six hundred.
What's that, I haven't begun, I'm sorry? It's a leak, it's, it's a leak, it's, we got it, so that they can just go along, pick everything up and, and.
Bag, it's a bag.
It's, it allows them to be more efficient to, to getting their work done.
Right.
And staffing wise, it, it makes a lot more sense and we wouldn't have to hire everybody and do, and do this and work indeed. So I have no issue with, with that.
I mean, obviously, there's savings just on the payroll lines in general because they had, they have vacancies, so. Yes.
Contingency?
Well, yeah, we have contingency.
So we, we could use, we have different ways we could actually cover this cost. So. Yes, and. Well. I don't, it, it. It just strikes me that there's, there's room for criticism out there, that we can just plan for. Leave. Normal budget process. Or figure some other way to value. I think we can, actually, you know, I'm just. And I wanna make it seem like we're short-sighted. We. We, 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 for decades, we've been picking up the leaves of corn.
Um, well, I mean, I think that's the purpose of not bypassing the budget process, we are actually.
So this is a way then to really insulate the tax.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, uh, that makes sense.
But the six fifty that she just talked of, that is. Perfect for her equipment purchase line for facilities because there isn't a specific use for it. But it does sound, say, rounds the, uh, rounds the, so. Um, and obviously we have to capitalize it for the cost report, but we always look at the equipment purchase line. In addition to the capital purchase lines when. In addition to the capital purchase lines when working.
Okay, don't want to add it.
Okay, so I took the six fifty off, but I added the fifty-six hundred.
Okay, and then one last. One last pro share request. Um, annually, we have the company that sold us our mattresses come in and assess our mattresses. And this is the seventh year. I wasn't anticipating this, but they essentially redlined half of our mattresses, indicating that they needed to be replaced. As I said, I did not anticipate that. It's disappointing. I'm very frustrated with the particular company that won the bid on this. I feel like that the mattresses of lesser quality than the prior companies that we used to stick with and buy. So my suggestion is that we um, we replace seventy-five. They, they redlined seventy-seven mattresses. I'm suggesting we ask twenty thousand dollars out of the pro share to go back to the. Original company we used to get mattresses from, which is direct supply. We get a slightly lower quality mattress. It's only anticipated to last five to seven years max. And just get into a quicker replacement, rather than trying to buy the higher quality, three to four hundred dollars per mattress. That's supposed to last ten to fifteen years. If they're not lasting the more than seven years, it's not worth in my mind. Paying double the amount for those mattresses. So again, I've got a, a really good quote. If we were to purchase seventy-five mattresses from the original company who used to always win the quote direct supply. Um, I could buy seventy-five mattresses for twenty thousand. Otherwise, I will be putting this in the twenty twenty-five budget, and next year they anticipate it to be two thousand dollars more um to wait. So we, we can do that, but the mattresses are on their last legs and um clinically, it's not a good position for us to be in.
And I question whether it's really realistic that the community in a bed only works seven minutes for half a mattress lasts ten years. But, you know, there's a lot of, it's, it's not a normal mattress in any sense. And it's occupied all the time. And so, you know, in terms of sleep years. Um, it's three times, it's only a fifteen year mattress that lasts five years.
And, and this is what I've heard yesterday from Catherine, that one, that, that. Majority of nursing homes are doing this, going to what they say is a lesser brand, but it's really, there's not. A huge difference in the quality. It's just the line difference and so, and. So, and it's a quicker, maybe it's a quicker five, six years, but it's cheaper initial cost, so that you're saving money along with it. And people have, and it's not like they're getting a bad mattress. I mean, it, it's not that, because we don't want that either.
No.
They're getting a quality mattress. But it's just a different way to look at it. And this is what a lot of nurses are finding the same thing that you just said. That people in those beds and the acuity of the patients that were having, has changed over the years. And you're having more people that are bedbed.
So what, what, why not just do seventy-seven, my stuff, seventy-five?
It was just an even number and it got me to exactly twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. And as to the other mattress, how close behind are they in terms of their life expectancy?
I expect that by next year, they'll be getting redlined as well, because this is only gonna replace half of the facility. So then we'll have to redo this again at some point next year, whether I go ahead and ask for the other seventy-five in twenty twenty-five. Whether it gets pushed out to another pro share request, so a year from now, we try to fulfill it. We're in that cycle, so I anticipate we're gonna have to replace all of them.
Over would be. Forty? What, what's the total of mattress?
Well, we have seven, we have a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty beds. Do you carry any extra?
No, if we have a hundred and fifty mattresses, that's sufficient, because we always have at least six to ten low air loss mattresses. We also have six bariatric beds.
Right. Are all the bariatric mattresses in use?
No. Not all six right now, no. And those actually, as you can imagine, those don't last five years. They have a heavier wear and tear on them.
All right, I'm happy with whatever you decide.
Okay. All right, so what we would need is, we would need a motion to approve the pro share recommendation made by the nursing home administrator. So. Commissioner Wasner. Commissioner England.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark. Okay, so we have that. We'll list that, we'll have that listed out in our minutes, so that you can see exactly what it was that we approved and.
With low Medicaid reimbursement rates. Gives us money, make up. Care, build a relief file system. So they give us money, a policy, Medicaid reimbursement, to load up. And so this helps us fill that gap without burdening the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Okay, Catherine, is there anything else that you want to report?
No, unless you have any questions, I'm all set, and I appreciate this time. Thank you.
What, what is the census I didn't get a chance to see though?
We're a hundred and five with an admission we're trying to get in. We're just waiting for a guardianship to uh. Sign the papers, but should be a hundred and six.
And what is the status of guardianship futures if they're?
Um, you, you cut out, I think you're asking about guardianships and the staff guardianships. They are very difficult to find. So for example, this person that we're working to admit has been in the hospital almost a year, waiting for guardianship. Guardianship has been put into place, and now we're waiting, because the guardian has to sign the papers for the admission. We prepared, this was last week, we agreed to this. They were supposed to come in Monday. The guardian didn't go to the hospital to sign the papers. Tuesday, we're on to Wednesday. So guardianship still remains a difficulty. We recently admitted a safety net person who was put into a temporary guardianship until a permanent one could be found. The waiting period is about um ninety days at the very least. So guardianship is very, very difficult and holding people at the hospital quite frequently at this point.
Do we, do we have a, do we have a single point of contact in the OPG office?
I believe. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I believe, I have a single, I don't know the current name, but I have to check with my social workers.
If you can get that, because this is just outrageous. I mean, that's, that's. Tend to a death sentence, somebody has to linger in a hospital, we don't get the care that they need because of a guardian. But lack of guards, that's lack, but that's really unacceptable.
So. Sorry, Jack, are you asking me to get you the OPG main contact?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I will offer to be a guardian.
I was gonna say.
You know, I wrote about a week ago, so you know, you had, that problem, that's a help.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm guarding for an individual with a disability and, and I mean, it's like, I don't know why they can't. Do some like kind of, you know, education series like uh, PASTA does and, and get people to step forward and help out.
I don't know, can you? And I don't know guardians get paid back or something. The state must do something.
Well, you know, at least from our residents, if they're on Medicaid, there is an allowance out of their, their, their income. That goes to, that we pay back to OPG. Um, and then, yeah, because I, I get the court orders a deduction from their monthly income. However, not everyone has a monthly income and some of these guarded um, patients that, that bear guardians work. I, I don't know what happens in those cases, but I mean, just, I mean, there's a, the healthcare side, which is the, you know, obviously the human side. But then there's also the payment side, because it, we used to feel good when there was a guardian. At play, because we felt confident that they were gonna follow through, but we've been burnt many times by um. The, the guardians just not either doing what they're supposed to, to get somebody qualified. Or they're gonna do it on their schedule. And as you know, Medicaid will not allow somebody to be eligible until they get under a certain resource. And so therefore, if they don't have time to deal with, that's unusual, bottom can be very messy. Um, it's on their schedule. So it can be months and months before they're able to deal with their finances. That ends up securing a good start date and.
This is the, uh, this is the uh unseen counterpart of DCYF. Where a child could be missing for two years, dead and missing for two years. DCYF doesn't know that, but it pays attention to it. I mean, this is the dark side. Skids in the shadows, but people don't see the element of the profession that certified guardians and the struggle. And that struggle has been decades. I mean. I mean, I, I have experienced the ways of getting guardians to respond. I've been working with, with guardians in the long-term care setting since nineteen eighty. And it's never. Never.
And I think with all the work that we're all trying to do right now, to ensure when somebody has health crisis. They are able to have a bed locally to get into, to be able to, and to know that. A year ago, Cheshire Medical lost thirty-five hundred day, days of bedtimes due to the inability of moving people. And part of that's because our census had to go down, because we did not have the staff. Now that census is starting to go, so we're doing our. And then, and then Cheshire Medical is appreciative of that. We also have the ambulance EMS services that is doing about three to four hundred more. Into facility transfers to move patients to other hospitals where they're needed surgery, that opens up beds. But if guardians is another piece of that puzzle, if that's holding it up, and they can't move people, that's problematic.
That thirty-five hundred days, the hospital daily rate is five hundred dollars, something like this. That's almost, that's almost too many now.
They don't get a penny from these statistics.
Yeah.
Well, it's a full, uh, the emergency room cannot always send patients upstairs. And um, and sometimes surgical procedures cannot be done when they require an overnight operation.
Right. No, it's, it's definitely, I, I get, we get notices. That the emergency department is full and we get undiversion, so. We pick somebody up and handle it. They have to go to a different hospital, because the, the ED is full, people are stuck. Yep, they can't get upstairs, because there's people upstairs that can't get them down. And so it's a terrible, terrible mess.
Yeah, my, my mother-in-law couldn't get in this past weekend, go room for two days.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I mean, I would be a guardian for free. If, if it's a budgetary issue with the state.
I mean, I don't know how they.
Could be.
I mean, I'm, it's free for me. I mean, I'm doing it, I've been doing it since nineteen ninety-three. I know, I mean, actually, well, actually, I, it's, it's, it's interesting. Now that he has a cell phone, I mean, I mean, over the last so many years, he called, I, we talked once a week. It used to be that I would once a month go out and see him. Now I'm talking to him once a week, and I go out and see him, you know, just in person every so often.
I mean, it, it heavy, now, it, it's only heavy in the sense that you're guarding people. Either the person or the finances, or all of them, and you've got the mess. Where the sort of, you know, the whole stage in there exists. And so. Almost everything is, 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 is a decision point. Food, transportation, the housing, the medical care. So. In a way, it's like having kids.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're the only person that can make those decisions, along the spectrum of whatever your guardianship encompasses. So.
Yeah, it can, it can be kind, you know, it can be. Yeah, especially if they're in, in health crisis.
You, you know, for example, with the nursing home, if you change somebody's medication, you gotta reason guardian. If the guardian takes two, three, four, five days to get back here, then you can't change the medication until we get some of them, in that. So. Move their room, right? Because it remains, you know, a problem or something. It's, it's just a nightmare. It's a. We gotta do something. But ideally. We could put more people in nursing, we could get them out of hospital, keep them close at home. Well, that could be true under some circumstances, but the state is people, and a state. People to be guarded, less people to be guarded. That's uncertain, a lot of this is. Because years that building wants. Yeah. Yeah, they can just do it. Yeah. With a certain line, person is. That, that's the problem. That is, and, and the guardians actually provide that oversight, because you, you expect that the nursing home is gonna. Give the guardians the best case scenario, with, with, with the best recommendations, so they care of that first. But they have to agree to it, they just can't do it, right? Um, so, it, it's, you know. It's not a well-oiled machine. So.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Catherine.
All right, thank you. Happy day.
You too. I'm gonna, gonna move on my reports. I'm gonna start with, uh. I'll be following up with the executive director of the E Community Kitchen. Um, as you remember, this year, along with the, the funding that we usually give them through the budget. We also gave them forty thousand dollars to start a mobile pantry, pop-up pantry going into towns. And supporting the pantries that are there. What they're finding is the pantries are struggling for, first and foremost, for workers. Uh, second, they're struggling for um. You know, food and, and, and donations. And so that the Community Kitchen has been, you know, spreading out, regionalizing their services on the levels. And so I'll be having a conversation with the executive director, sir, officer this week, to see where that stands. And give some data for us and putting some numbers together. Do you remember a few weeks ago, um, they had an increase. Um, of two thousand boxes that they gave out, when normally in a day, they can give out anywhere from four to six hundred. And so, um, today believe that, that is because the locations are, they were gonna close a certain day that boxes would go out. Getting, getting, coming in, getting double, or not double, but more people just, and so. There's a real issue around food insecurity in Cheshire County. We understand that. The commissioners have addressed that in the past. Delegation has addressed that. Um, and so all they have been part of discussion, that, that leads into the second conversation that Mr. Clark was on yesterday. That we had a meeting with Southwest Region Planning Commission and an individual from the state, talking about transit throughout the. Throughout the county and what that means. Um, we want to be active in, in that conversation. We don't know what that means from our point. Last thing I really wanna do, and that's not on the table, there's nothing on the table at this point, is to start a transit system through the county. But um, is there things that we can do to help support? There is a lot of isolation going on in our communities. They're not able to get to the doctors. They're not able to get, to get, to sort of go to grocery shopping. There, those are real, real realities that they're facing. And is there ways that we can support them? So Southwest Region Planning is going through a process right now. They're gonna give us some models and thoughts and see, you know, what role we could play. And again, I don't know what that means. I think I've. And again, I don't know what that means, I think I've really tried to be really clear with them. And having them understand that, it's all I have in my plan, I can't start to tell the story and a true understanding. And so knowing Southwest Regional Planning Commission, they will do a thorough, um, analysis of everything. They probably, they already have a lot of numbers in the data, and we'll see if we can move forward on, in, in a discussion on, on what that means. But there is a real strong issue in our communities when it comes to individuals not having the means. To be able to get their needs, I'm not talking social, I'm talking medical or medical.
But you know. It's a lot like. We're talking about transportation. And at the end of the day. If you look at a scheduled route service, there's politics, there's something in money, so the issues are within. Legitimately effective if you. The other thing is determining the need, many people don't come in and introduce their customer. But I'm wondering, the, the. Right share, the share.
Why, we talked about that yesterday.
And some sort of modified version of, of that, so that you could almost have an à la carte system. Rather than a structured, expensive overlay of correct, of a schedule.
I mean, i- if you look at everybody, and, and I think what I, I said, which I said, medical and food. But we also should add in work and training. There are people not working because they don't have the ability to transport themselves to work. And, and, and so if, if, if we had a system set up, is that another piece of the puzzle of supporting our working? Our, our manufacturers, commercial, whatever it may be, um, there are.
It's a good point, because you know, if you could get, say, a local, a shop. To pay forty dollars, get them to be there every day and back, then. That, they get the benefit of that foil they're on. Basically, a dollar, you know, less than a dollar. It's the same army we take here. Well, we could, you, you, you know, you'd actually have, if you, if you had mechanics, you'd get people. Just like, just like, um, dealers.
And that's what I said to them yesterday, I said, you know, as you think of ideas, think about, but. Patient has programs that are on, that are not one-time funding, that are long-term funding, eighty, twenty. So we would have to come up with a twenty percent of the cost, they would come up with a eighty percent of the cost, they also have another program that would be fifty, so we do a fifty-fifty split. So is there opportunities, is there opportunities, like, we don't have a lot of Lyft or Uber drivers in this region. But if they knew that it was a prepaid thing, if we gave, set aside a hundred thousand dollars to some program. And, or, or that they could invoice us for, or, and they could show us that they did it for medical, they did it for this, is there, I mean. Think, think, think big, I mean, let's play what they do here.
Do here to transport people back into town. Where.
No, we have it with a vendor, we have it with a vendor where they take them to where they want to drop off, that's something that.
Several vendors.
If, if all we have to do is rate a twenty percent, we go to the chamber. And they contribute the twenties, that's not too expensive. We use the twenty that are contributed by the businesses in the area, and if you dilute that, now they're not paying forty dollars, they might pay five hundred. But you raise that twenty percent, you, you leverage, then the county goes out with the eighty percent, now the second. System where, correct, an à la carte way you could reach and, and walk.
I mean.
This is no different than, than a challenge we put to them or the chamber. Where we, we, we match.
Yeah, what, oh, the, the match for the. Yeah, and the businesses have done, have stepped forward and done that, and so I.
I think, I think there's a model out there for. The, a scheduled fifty to ten, yes, fifty-one, twenty-one.
And, and what, and the thing is, we already have some models that are working, we have the Kentucky Valley, um, uh, transportation. Right, and that has to be a, you know, a setup time ahead of time kind of thing, that's, you know, it's forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, I can't remember. And then we have the, the Smart Ride that we started, the M, the wheelchair service. And, you know, like I told you a few weeks ago, we're heading towards fourteen thousand wheelchair transports this year alone. Fourteen thousand, that's huge. And that's every town in the, it's every town in Cheshire County, every town.
Yeah, this comes back to the fact that between the EMS and the wheelchair transport. This department, this program comes in contact with more citizens than all other community services combined. Combined.
Because I mean, think about it, we're heading towards, what, interfacility transfers, we're heading towards sixteen hundred to two thousand. Um, interfacility transfers from hospital to hospital, and then you have the nine-one-ones, and we're heading towards two thousand there. And so you put that.
Vision isn't, not necessarily, oh, man's specific. We're missing people in need, they want a system to get cars. That will train people, you don't need to drive a car.
Right, I, I understand.
Develop a system like that, that brings to the net, but you can come and go.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my thing is, my thing is, is I wanna address the need, and if it evolves into less cars on the road that's great. Right now, the need is more significant.
Those numbers in terms of. Only work if the single vehicle that you're transporting multiple people, of people. Displace the other ones, vehicles, they would have been in.
Correct.
But if you're only doing three people out of Winchester, and one out of Troy. And you're running a bus that pulls thirty people, twelve people. You don't get, you don't get to displace vehicles off the road, lower your carbon footprint. I mean, you have to have the ridership, that comes back to numbers. My bet is, carbon impact would be less if you sent one guy out in one small vehicle, one vehicle to go to Troy and come back. Versus a route every twenty minutes, five different towns, which is virtually empty, that's the problem. Problem is the ridership and the timing is, you, you can't align it to all of the needs that are out there. At least if there's.
No. And I, I agree a hundred percent with you, I mean, I, even when I worked at NDS, um, I ran transit, that's part of my area, transportation. And we had one being one of the same routes over and over for multiple times a day. Making people up facilities and, and transporting work for the doctor, that's sure they need to be. And it was a, it was a great program, but there's no carbon neutral there, it just, there is, I mean, they're, they're just possible.
And so in a way, it's almost additive, because otherwise, if people would be sitting home, they don't have it. So you're not taking the car for the road, but they're not gonna begin with it. But their economic participation, their healthcare, their sustenance, right?
Yeah.
Those are the needs we're needing, because, you know, you can't claim a carbon footprint benefit. Denying somebody food, employment, or transportation, that's not how you get a weird carbon footprint.
And any, any other thing, the reality is, is there could be some level of fee for the individual that's taking a ride, but if you really are gonna bank it. Ridership is going to help on, and offset what probably the public, that's not for yet, that's not for yet. We're gonna need the eighty percent or the fifty percent from the state and the management department, the O P, will make this work. But it's, you know, so I think we had a good conversation yesterday, I think they heard us. Um, and we'll have further conversations, and I'll ask them actually come into the commissioners. And, and talk about what we're talking about here.
I think it'd be great this time.
Yeah, I do, I agree, and I think they need to hear where we're coming from, because I, I think, again.
The same sentence that we began and. If it's possible, it could come to be.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna. Well, I won't be, I mean, as you all know, we, we did not wanna start an EMS service. You know, we didn't wanna start those things, and I don't wanna stop, I don't wanna start it, there's, there's other ways we can look at that. If we can help physically on some level, you know, if they have a program, then that's what we should look at. But us to take on personnel, us to take on overhead restoring, us to take on vehicle maintenance and all this other thing, that's just a nightmare. I'd love to have executives who were or.
Well, it could be an hybrid Uber, doesn't that be Uber, M W?
Yeah.
It, it could be an Uber type of model, is sort of the, those cars are expensive. Trended concept, but which grows to identify the need and respond to individual needs. And, and they don't have to worry as much about aggregating the data. Need is changes every year, it could change every month.
Yeah.
And you can't, you'll never live long enough. And I, I, I can remember going to remote meetings of own healthcare, which is the only the transportation. You know, sponsor here with, with dollars. Twenty-five years ago. And the issues are the same, it's wicked expensive. Own healthcare doesn't have the resources, it's not really the industry that's doing it. But they've only been doing it for decades because nobody else would do it. Right, City of Keene has shown the entire concept, many money to transition.
Yeah.
So.
It's an adequate.
It is, it's no interest.
And it's an adequate service. Yeah, it's, it's not. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, and if you can't, I've been waiting for it, just for a week, but. Many times, that would be the only one.
Right.
And it only costs a buck to get on it. But that comes back for the data and the need. This, this is why, this is a good conversation, because we, we ought to have a fervor to look at the system we got. Recognize the efficiency shortcut, not all, but official. And try to find a better way to meet needs. And when maybe the Uber's. And right now, it's our question is, when they issue, I don't know if you saw it. They have a bullet, and the county do it, with one of the. Setting, setting up, or the transportation. And then there was one more for organizations, we have to remember, especially that. So. I just wanna know that, that is their, our goal is to have that.
But I gave them a little bit of hesitation, I mean, if they're talking about regionalization and all this stuff, and I'm like. We, we know about regionalization, we're doing regionalization first, and then second, I made them aware that they, they need to be able to. Understand that. You come in with something, it's not gonna be, I mean, it, it, I, I use the example of Manana Interpig. When they came and said, we want three million dollars to help housing, you know, this dealless housing trust. And that we can give to people, and we're like, no. And the county could take it over, it's like, no.
Say, it's interesting, we, we should talk about that next, because I'm keeping, I saw Tom. Julius.
Yeah.
And he, he.
But we pointed him where it landed.
He and I spoke the other day, he, he, he saw me out and said, you know, we came to you guys a couple of years ago, and I said, I remember, we told you to go back. And we told him why the county couldn't be. Made suggestions to them about how they could raise their own stakeholder money, guess what? They've done that, right?
Yeah, no, they, they, we actually listened to you, and we did. Yeah, no, we, we, because they came in and, and I actually said to them, it's incredible, here again, for you guys to walk in here. And ask us for this, when you haven't done any of the homework, but we sent them, so then now they're partnering with Medic. And now they're, that's how they, they've been able to utilize Medic's funding. They bring in, and, and that's what it should have been, it shouldn't be, been us. But, but, you know, and I gave that examples to.
Everybody wanted there.
Right, right, but I gave them that example yesterday, yesterday on the call, saying, you know, you got a dream. But it's gonna be, if, if, if we're part of that dream, it's gonna be that we're compatible with what part of the dream we're, we're in.
Yeah, I, I think it's great, I love it. Yeah. I think that's exactly. You know, when we, when we make suggestions to people on how they can make the role of a place.
Yeah.
And they do it, I'd like to see the ball, exactly. But you know, uh, we were in Tampa, right, we were in, so it's a Tampa. And, and you know, get a cab. No, no, I was surprised, they're. It's amazing.
Yeah.
But from up here, Davis is just calling Uber, they're saying, hey, go pick up Terry. And they were mostly on the side, stumbling around the street.
Yeah.
And. No, you, you couldn't get down the elevator before there.
And there were no taxis, none.
Yeah.
It was all Uber or Lyft.
You know, it's just.
Depends where you go and.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if I, I don't. You know, it's, it just happens.
Yeah.
And so, it's a great model. And we just need to kind of figure out how to make it work for them here.
Yeah.
In between groups.
Even, even in, even in Florence, it was the same thing. They show me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, be right there. It was the middle of night, and this guy. This, this car came up right front, dropped some people off, oh, this is great, we can just take that. No, 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 we're on another call, so we're staying in New.
That's what I, now I'm a little bit.
Not always, that's.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's a good model, and I think it'll be a great conversation. We can use the county to leverage. The matching money here to get to that community center then.
Yeah.
And we don't have to take it over, you know, there's, there's always this question that, now, what the problem is. And so our position is trying to be, we're happy to be the subsidiaries, collaborators, the, the launchers. But we need buy-in from.
Unless it pays, unless it pays.
Well, the problem, the foundation, well, and the date here, government money is that appears somewhere. Business, especially the big businesses, will, will kick in.
Oh, it is.
So, um. You know, like when we started the Smart Ride, give your transport, I mean, we, we need something. Buy some equipment, but, but it fundamentally is, most of the revenue is, is off of. The, the amount that you have to be transporting, Austin subsidizes it a little bit because. Is to their advantage to get patients probably lost by home, um, and because darkness fighting, so there's an economic benefit as well as a logistic. And it is sort of bound to, for us to subsidize anything, for us, but the people, our good people. And so we've actually helped employ people and grow a business. Employ people and grow a business. Really small. So it's absolutely different.
All right, I'm gonna keep on going. Um, Harry, is there any update on the Cheshire County power?
Uh, well, we're. We just set up. Public information sections to the town of Troy and in state. The twenty first and the twenty third of this one. So they will launch. All the time, sorry, just. Either one, if you wanna know the meeting, they're they're setting up. Public information section themselves.
Okay.
Um, so that, um. They didn't think about buying a community. And they're, so they did much, we had much.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have. We have. Launched our new rates on officers. Which included the sign adder. Starting in the ready so. Sorry. And really attempting to see this. Really clearly choose. We still have the lowest. Like the trade.
And that means, means the towns and and we have what currently, I mean towns. By seven or.
Nine. Nine towns are are. Join Cheshire Greenout.
Nine out of the twenty three.
Yeah. Most of the towns are involved in in a community.
Like wall, if wall or like.
All our western land in Harrisville. Joint C B C and themselves. Fifteen, fifteen Swansea and all of them. Join Wilton to do their standard power.
They're missing a three year contract and they're at a flood rate.
They're they're still at eleven four.
And we're at eight, we're at eight what?
Uh, we're.
Eight point nine.
Yeah. Yeah, the the King, Marlborough, Swansea. And and now Jasper. Uh, is now actually fired. And you know, utility default.
That was.
Yeah. So I mean. In that very first quarter. Uh, they were, they were a little bit lower. But they've been higher than the utility since.
Yeah.
And.
Sometimes it's good to be patient and do it the right way and not be the first one to get. Because that's that's what they did. I mean, that's a pure, I'm not bashing them. They wanted to do something with electrical rates going up like they were. But they locked themselves into a three year contract. Whereas ours, you know, ours is. And with every six months, the the rate is re reevaluated.
And I got to figure out a way to get, um. On Swansea and Marlborough's. The. This coming March. Because their contract is. Okay, maybe she's. Change it over. It's just not working.
And uh, can other towns? Over here.
Distance. Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, I'm actually working on. Elsa's. And. Most of them. Ridge has decided to purchase. They're gonna be. Like a horse since Mark. But, um. Yeah, spoken at least one minute. Just. But it's it's something that. Because it's it's really a misunderstanding. They they think that. Because the town has a long term contract. In town, it's like, you know, long term annual contracts for budget budget purposes. That they think that because they have that. They they can't sign up. The rate barriers. Which they can.
So I live in Keene. I'm on the the Cheshire County plan because it's a savings to me.
Yeah, so in other words. Ridge as a municipality on their building. Establishes right. Right, by the way, citizen towns. Yeah, they could be. Fair enough. There there's still some people who see it as socialism.
All I care about is my bill. My bill went from two hundred and twenty dollars down to eighty seven dollars. That's all I care about. Bottom line.
Yeah, you know, it's it's the same. It's no harm, no harm. I've never used to this. Why would you wanna spend less money than you do now? Why would you deliberately spend more money than you need to? Not at those areas. But it's somebody who's. They're just like. Awesome, there be. Anyway, we're we're. When we tried to give some of the money to. One town. The state rent, the delegation's vote against it, I couldn't figure out. Why didn't you vote against us giving money to the town? Understand that.
Two years now? Yeah. Of course, some towns try to reject their own money straight from the federal government too.
Well, that's a way, it's an ideological. And anyway, so we're 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 moving right along. Our project is uh, is is happening. Uh. Then we division.
Hmm.
And uh, we just, we're just gonna continue moving forward. Eventually. Towns are gonna join us or not?
Well, I'm working in a town.
At the interim. I know they have an energy committee. Now, we've seen ages. We're pushing seventy towns. And. And if the person knows, there's two other towns.
Yeah. Oh, oh, it's actually possibly very poor. So it's right now currently. On the air back is definitely. Oh, it is, as far as I know, we're looking at it. Sullivan. Is wanting to have that happen too. Yeah, well Derek was hoping that Claremont, where he lives, would start it and they're just very slow to to make that happen. Uh. So.
You know, the funny part of it is, I can remember years ago. Complaining that the biggest. In the afterword, electricity. So. That just underscores the contradiction of what. Look, you to try to reduce your. Well, you. So. But he sees it. And he has the money to spend. I already had some money.
And this is a, this is the avenue. Do this and it's just, I think it's probably one of the most. Efficient, cost efficient things that we've done. Since, I mean, we've done a lot of man containing. Has it cost us anything? And it's all all it is is the savings of everybody that's in it.
Yeah.
It it it's like, it may, and and it just took us longer because we had to change legislation. And because it was all made and written for municipalities and not for counties. And once that changed, and once we had it changed, then ban, and it's just been, and it made it easier for towns. It's the one thing that, you know, we all learned during COVID is that. Um, towns administratively don't have the bandwidth to do a lot of this stuff. And for us to be able to carry uh, the water on this and then let them come in and just. Do some public hearings and then have the select board do it instead of putting it on as a. As a warrant article and getting it all, you know, it it's like, it's been magic for people. It really, I mean. If I'm saving, you know, hundreds of odd dollars every month. You know, that's that's big.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is funny. In one of the other towns, I was the interim administrator. They we've performed an energy committee talk. And there were two or three people. Free citizens. Couldn't be able to sit up. So there's no way, nobody's gonna be telling me where to spend my money. And that's one of the things, nobody is. You can spend as much money as you want on electric. We're just trying to offer you a way to.
And.
Don't force you to do anything.
The town can't stop us. And you can opt out of the town's thing and go back to that resource, you know?
There are two towns. Who, which is not the joint because. Feels as though that. The town has no money. Put, you know, put the people into the power rate. There's gonna say the money. Have the right to do that, even though it's enabling legislation. It was the only, it was probably the only legislation in the entire. Year in the state of New Hampshire where. It's sent both unanimously. And it was signed by the governor the next day. You know? And yet these people are still saying that, oh, you don't, nobody's gonna tell us.
He's gonna tell us to say.
Tell me that I changed this. Well, you don't have to change, you can just go to a fraud. Certainly that person, uh. You know, not join it. Oh, yeah, you do. Yeah, it. Yeah, and as I said, there are some people out there who just don't. I get magically stuck in the mud. Then they just not ready to do it. Just fine. You're not gonna change their mind. And the way I said, most everybody else. You know, like, and I understand. A lot of people wanted to wait. And and see how it was gonna wash out. See how the other towns, if it works for them, it wouldn't get involved. How it is and how it could be so.
Yeah.
Well, it's it's been. Because if if you if you're open to going into the anger. And then just tell me that. The environment is, you know, they're just electrons and it doesn't mean anything. Then we can ask them, we can ask them. All the electricity comes from that hydro again, in those farm. It's just, so it's all one hundred percent. Mean energy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, and it doesn't matter. If they bought it from C B C and H or from where. Bill, that's still coming from that plant because that's where the wire.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's still the same electricity. But if they can buy it, you know. People have achieved. See, I mean. It's all right, but don't be. Well, they go. Sure, yeah, I'll see. Yeah, good. Three days a week, I may even be soon. Well, instead of representing. That's great, yeah. And I won't end up there. Two days of good garbage, so. But I know they have an energy trade. Sure.
Yes, okay. Next, um, yesterday we we sponsored a forum with Southwest Southwest Regional, um, planning commission. In that meeting, uh, the staking down. Um, and they had speakers from investment Hampshire, which is a all that where you can, yeah, learn more. Having funding out there that if you're a developer or whatever it may be that you're looking. So they were there, uh. At the Hampshire, they had an individual talking about. All the hundred and twenty two million dollars that came into the state of New Hampshire and how they're collecting, uh. How they're. Going into each county and really benefiting the needs and ensuring that. Every individual has the opportunity and to be connected. And what's interesting is we really have rushed. It when it comes to un- uncertain or un-unconnected.
True.
Under cert, yeah, and, um. It was, I think it never was down to a thousand something. Uh, when it was much higher five years ago.
And so they, we did imagine one kind of. Now, and that that's what shows.
Yeah.
More people connected now.
Yeah, and.
That's such a.
Yeah. And, um, I did bring up that, uh, the whole. Idea of telecommunication is more than just the last month. And Southwest, uh, can fire mutual aid and the issues there. And what I did get him to say is. Once we know. Where all the money is, where where. How much money we need to use for this. We will be looking at other ways we can utilize this funding. Um, for the purposes that it was brought for in in ours would be something that that they could look at. So that that was, that was important for him to to get to that point. And it would be by the middle of next year that they think they would have an idea. So that's right in our timeline.
I think the timing is good. But as you know, we met with. National law judge, Congress. Sharpening the acuity of federal delegation to fund nine one one upgrades because, you know, if you look at. Nationwide, the nine one one system. Is twenty to thirty years old.
Hmm.
And and so what we're experiencing here in Cheshire County is not unique to us because every. Virtually every nine one one. Service and all the infrastructure is 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 pretty much the same age. Some of your larger cities and some of the smaller. Towns and counties have spent their own money. So, but it is still an acting problem. So timing could be pretty good.
Yeah, so we also, they also had the actual northern borders. So we were able to ask questions. There's probably about twenty five, maybe thirty, but twenty five people in the room. Uh, City Keen was there and, um, so it was a good conversation and then afterwards they broke up. And you could go and ask some questions and so it was, it was overall, I thought it was a healthy conversation. I got some leads on some projects. Uh, that we're looking at and so that's a, that's a good thing. Um. The only other thing, because the other stuff is, you know, public. Is Doug, did you wanna just continue to update us on any any new pre-trial? Issues, uh, anything that's come up lately that you, uh, or anything?
Yeah, since I updated you initially. Uh, remember Ch-Cheshire County was the fifth county that went through a. Sequential intercept planning process had about sixty people there in the criminal justice and. Mental health, S U D providers, peer support, housing people. Decided to take on three projects out of Cheshire County and try to keep the momentum going. One was, uh, female housing, female transitional housing, sober housing. Second project was, um. They're calling it, um. Free. Like pre-arrest diversion. Um.
Re-vested.
Yeah, like, um. Well, so in the.
Diversion.
So someone who is. Clearly experiencing a mental health crisis, um. Could go potentially to a screening center. Um, or.
Oh.
Or, and in terms of cost, they're, I think, starting out looking at. Use of peer support through Manada, peer support services and recovery coaches, but. It it's one of the two projects I'm not involved, so I don't know the details as well. And the third one, which I am much more involved is. Developing a pre-trial service. Program, um, which would mean all basically all detainees. At the jail. Get screened before arraignment with a standardized best practice tool on for risk. Risk primarily being targeting. What's the chances of not showing up, you know, bail jumping, not showing up for their their court appearances? And then a public safety risk. And. Presenting that to the judge at arraignment. Judge uses that to make decisions on bail from no bail. Traditional bail. Or assigning them into a program. Um. For. Blushing out further individualized, um, needs and referrals. Um. We, we had that group meet. Once since the original meetings. Um. We're still gathering a lot of information from other counties that are doing something similar. And. We've talked. Generally, uh, and Suzanne was there, Bensley. And there's a grant that could come out sometime, but. As early as November to March, that would be very appropriate as a way to start out the funding. Would allow potentially at least a pilot. Trial program with about two. Staff. We generally envisioned it being linked to an existing. County program. I don't know what Allison would say about this, she wasn't there, but. In my view, it's probably most logically similar. To what they do with behavioral health court where. Case manager is taking those cases, assessing them, referring them out, monitoring their progress, lack of progress on that plan. Reporting back to the court on issues of non-compliance and that sort of thing. And. We'll be meeting about every two to three weeks to keep. Moving on that, that. Project.
Yeah. Good. All right, um, just want to make you aware that. Received a letter ten from Ask Me, the union at the nursing home. So you're okay. So me, as you know, we already had a prelim conversation, so now we're just looking for days to start that conversation. And then, um, we're also in the process of working with B N S. And we still have dispatch and deputies. And then the only other thing is, is.
No.
The one asked me to teamsters. Um, the only other thing I'll say is, it's all, this is the good news. Uh, while I was on vacation, I mean, if you ever wonder why it's important for us to have a tight relationship with. With Senator Shahin and others. Um. We, we went down, uh, or, or when we go down to DC and, and to. Really talk to our elected officials. Um, so as you know, we put in a congressional spending request. The congressional spending request, and this is for Southwest. Fire mutual aid and for your, of your education. Uh, five years ago, we realized the sheriff's dispatch. Um, the towers that carry the radio frequencies so the police and, uh, police can talk to each other in the communities and talk to headquarters. Um, we're over twenty years old and we were going on eBay to, uh, find parts. So we were, uh, one down system away from real crisis. Uh, we had a study done, it was about a four-point-four million dollar cost. Um. To the taxpayers, um. We were able to convince the delegation, the commissioners were always on. This, that we weren't going to put a budget, we were going to see if we could find grant money or some other revenues to offset that and not put it on the, on the tax base. Um, we were able to get a congressional spending request back then, we were able to get another board's grant, we were able to get other grants to cover the full four-point-four million dollar cost. So it didn't go to taxpayers. Um, I will tell you that one of the reasons that you'll see that we're, if you look at other counties and you look at where we are when it comes to. Um, an increase in taxes to be raised, that the true cost of the taxpayers. I mean, this year was negative zero point zero nine. Doesn't mean that wrench isn't going to go up because we don't have control if you've had an evaluation done. But, you know, we take great pride in trying to come in and understand the politics and the financials. You know, the, the financial realities that everybody's in as best you can because the year before that, it's a zero percent increase. So, um, I can, I can't believe anybody that that's going to be year to year, that's what we can do. But we're going to try every year to be thoughtful around what we're doing. But, um, so we were able to cover that cost because we did such a great job. Uh, Southwest Regional, uh, Southwest Fire Mutual Aid, as their system is the same years old, they have a study done, it's four-point-eight million dollars. So we were asked to help them find funding. We started down this road, we have multiple hooks in the pond. And, um, again, while on vacation. Davis got a call, or I think it was Davis.
Yep.
Um, got a call. And, uh, Senator Shahin had been in appropriations, uh, appropriations committee. They have some money left over. She called us. Um. And because if we don't do. If we don't find the money for this. A town like Ranch will see about a three-hundred to four-hundred-and-fifty percent increase in what you're paying Southwest Fire Mutual Aid currently. Because you'll have to, you'll have to carry the costs. So we were able to, um, you know. And we made it, we advocated strongly over the last one year. To them, this is something, it's harder for some reason to find money for fire than it is law enforcement. Um, and so. They, uh, she came back, she thought of us. They gave an hour. An hour to turn on a budget reflecting the numbers she had asked us to do. And, uh, between, um. Davis and Dawn, and I'm guessing a little bit of Joe. Yes, okay. Hey, not much. So, so she has set aside nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, for us and, and it's in, it's in appropriations and it was on to pass that over appropriations. Then it's a start. This is how we started last time with, um. With, uh, getting the four-point-four million we needed to cover the cost there. You know, we've also had, looks like, uh, Jack will tell you if we win the date is, but. We're going to be meeting with Buckston again and his staff. Now, this time his staff is going to be in the room. And we're going to have a straight-up conversation. Around why it is so difficult. To be able to, uh, help us. Get the information we need so that we can go up a FEMA, uh, a brick grant through FEMA. And, um, so that's one. We also realized we can utilize community development block grant. Up to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Because, um. Suzanne, I asked Suzanne about that yesterday and she's like, that's infrastructure, da-da-da. She's going to, she's doing some checking, but she's strong. Yes.
And we can just.
Yeah.
Do ourselves.
Yeah, that'd be great. And, you know, and.
Normally we try. It's, it's maybe there's housing or whatever.
And there's no hot list right now. There's nobody waiting in the chute for that. So if we could set aside, you know, get that approved. And then, you know, so all of a sudden, you're over a million dollars. You're heading towards two million dollars. We're cutting that cost in half. And I still have other places that we're looking, so. You know, I think we could. I, I think we could end up anywhere between. Three million and four million of that four-point-eight. And if that means the taxpayers have to carry eight-hundred thousand out of four-point-eight million. I'm okay with that.
So you know, Joe and the board has. Increased collecting money, we could put aside the capital. Usually.
They have some monies, yes, they have monies, some level monies set aside because they've been able to do some of, some work that's driven some of the costs down, so.
Is it, what is meaning?
I don't know. I didn't know that. I can ask.
What is it?
I mean, uh, I, I don't know, I, I've heard as low as twenty thousand. And as high as.
Lended rate?
It's.
Yeah. Then, uh.
A fixed capital rate? Yeah, and then there's a fixed component as well. At least that's what it used to be. There was three components, a fixed capital cost and then.
Is that, that way, yeah, the, the assessed value reflects not. Cost, you know, it's arguably not. So, you know, you're a people living down. So they make this rate on the chart, you give seventy-six or a hundred.
Yeah.
Can you give us? On, on that? Um.
But I, you know, I mean.
I didn't know what the budget is.
I applaud Davis and Dawn because I was on vacation and they told me, but I was like, I was, I was on vacation, so I wasn't there immediately. Give it done, so the turnaround and meet the budget line and then it can. Is, is, uh. Was great.
The idea is, you get. These offices, they had this. Here's. The juniors didn't want it, didn't need it, so it's money being broken, so we're trying to get some of that money because otherwise this goes back to Washington, you can never see it again.
Or it goes to Kentucky or it goes to some other place and it's like, why can't we have it? And if it offsets the direct impact of taxes. And maybe taxpayers money, like you said, but if it's, if it helps offset the direct pay of taxes, I'm okay with that. And so, uh, that's the first bite and we're excited by it. Again, it's in appropriations and it also means if it comes out of appropriations, that has to be approved. Across the board. But it has been in the past, so I'm, I'm hoping and. And so job well done. And we'll get there hopefully. So, um, that's what I have, um, is there any old business? Did I forget something?
No, I have something I know I should have. Mentioned at the beginning, so it's new business, except I, when you said old business.
Our new business?
I just want to just kind of keep guys all, um. Um, in the loop that we'll be doing a short-term line of credit in the near future. Um, our bond payments are due October first for the jail and the nursing home, and so at that point, that's where we basically, we, the funds that we have, so. Um, I will be preparing and working with. Line counsel, treasurer, and then. Soliciting to the local banks for a line of credit and so it would still. No different be, um, the paperwork's really no different than. Full blown tan. Um, so the availability at least of the majority of the commissioners will need to be, uh, with. What's that? I have no idea.
And you understand your way.
Yeah, I mean, we, in the past, we always had to do a tan, a competitive tan that we would borrow the money. More like towards, um, late. Winter, early spring. And. Hold, have those funds. From the moment they became available, right to the point of collecting taxes in December. So that you're aware what happens is our stat, um, by statute. The taxes, the county taxes. Um, are collected December seventeenth of each year. That collection of taxes is for. The. Prior. Twelve months that we have been working. So, um. Fund balance is basically, you know, essentially the money that you have in the bank account that continues to fund your operations and. Those funds that we had in the bank. Um, would run out about. April, May. So we would borrow. Lump sum to get us all the way through December, invest those funds as much as possible so that. We're getting some return on the money that we're sitting on because we have to pay for it for two-hundred days. But, um, now we, um, at this point, don't have to borrow that early in the year. Um, we borrow.
More near as much.
It's nowhere near as much, so what we do is we now do a line of credit tan so that. Um. It's not like we, we're going to get the money and sit on it. We just draw down on it as we need it. And pay it back as we can. So, um, it's just for a very short period. And again, it's, it's always lined up to the fact that we have significant bond payments due October first.
You think Mexico?
Probably. Probably. Yeah.
I, I don't. Understand it, but some communities. They get a lot of credit.
Feeling that's going to get elastic, that's going, it is the one that got our lending.
Last. Last year. And the other. That's going to say, we can't do that. That would be illegal. Thing. Really, yes. Of the community, so. I still haven't resolved it. Could get on a credit for that.
But they, they're the ones that provided our line of credit. I mean, it wasn't a line, it was a tan. I mean, I will say, they still call them tans, you still have to get legal opinion.
Yep.
To make sure that you're following all the.
Right.
You're dotting all your i's and crossing all your t's and, um. So. But it, because we're getting the money for such a short period of time. It's, in, in, as much as we do our own internal competitive vetting to get the best rate possible, we don't do it in the, um, the public sale arena as we would for earlier on. Tax anticipation, no, because then you end up getting, um, financial advisor fees. I mean, there's a lot more. Costs other than bond council to do a big help public sale that is just not worth it for a short period of time.
Yeah.
But that is interesting that they.
Yeah.
Any other new business? Seen, uh, consent agenda items, both to accept the weekly manifest minutes in July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, so. Okay, question, seeing none, Commissioner Wosman. Your mother England, Commissioner Clark. Okay, moving on, calendars, anything on the calendar that we need to be aware of except for Monday at ten o'clock? Executive meeting?
Um, I guess also the refugee resettlement meeting is tomorrow, two-thirty, just a reminder. I sent you all the link, um, so you have that and then. Another reminder that the Commissioner put out is on August twenty-first.
And you have yours next Wednesday on fourteen.
Next Wednesday, people can arrive at Porper, Shrum or Kayak. Everybody else can get there up to five-thirty, right? I mean, I mean. Probably forty percent have, um.
Oh, there you go, yeah, I got it. Me as well. What do I, I mean, what I. All right. Um, sure. There is no general discussion? I mean, you, you have any, I was going to get there, yeah, I was going to ask if there's any thoughts on today?
Um, it was awesome. Appreciate the time, the insight to give me background information on the topics. Very important. And I plan on.
All right, thank you very much.
There may be documents on the website.
I have them.
History on the. In that context. Be raised, just.
And there's some, there is some podcasts, we've started a podcast. On there, so, uh, we have, I think, three, three overall so far. Um, one's on the nursing home, one's just me talking about the podcast, what we're going to be talking about and about the county as a whole. And then the other one was with Terry of Community Power, so you can understand that a little bit better. And then, uh, hopefully we have another one this week and then we have. About six others lined up right behind it. So, because we want to make sure, we want to make sure we're trying to tell a story as best we can.
And I wish more people would look at that because there is a long misunderstanding about what you do here.
Yeah.
And why. It really is. And learn from myself.
All right.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And you as well.
Nice to meet you. And I'm Claudia Stewart, I'm from Ranch and I am, um, running for the county commissioner. Great. Thank you very much. I was your next.
Okay, we have two non-publics. When we come out of the second non-public, we can. I don't know. I don't know. Um, so. We have two non-publics and then we have the non-meeting, so when we come, when we come out of the second non-public, we put a general reading of our. Okay, okay? And then non-publics are.
They, they should, I mean, this may still be under warranty.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, this is not a very old.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to look into it.
Been the last year.
Yeah, we're going to look into it. Yeah, and Cameron, you still there?
I've got mine, if you want me to just turn around.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. So the two non-publics are RSA ninety-one dash eight, one, three, two, A, the missile promotion for our fox station employee. Um. I'm going to start with Doug first, uh, actually, I take that back, did you want?
Oh, did you want to know?
Yeah, just. One is, and one is RSA ninety-one dash three, colon, three, two, A, and the other one is, um. Is this, it's right here, it is, uh, a non-public, uh, RSA ninety-one, A, three. Dash A three, colon, three, three, which matters to discuss.